All right, we're all set up here. It's very nice to see my colleagues again this evening. And so, we're going to get this meeting started. I'm going to officially call to order the Committee of the Whole for the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, August 18th, 2025. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooney.
President.
Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here, thank you Clerk Borling. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Decker?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion passes, Commissioners. And, we have several, a couple presentations tonight. It's nice to see people here in the chambers for that. Welcome. Nice to have you here. Next on our agenda, Communications. Manager Ritzma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
No communications from the manager's office for this. Next is the opportunity for public comments. Here's a chance for the Committee of the Whole. If you would like to make a comment on any topic, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name, where they live in the city. Seeing no one. Just a reminder, there is also an opportunity for public comments at our business meeting that starts at seven o'clock. You have a little longer at that meeting to make your public comment. It's not as short as our two-minute limit here for Committee of the Whole. So, we are now down to the work of the evening. Manager Ritzma.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We have, as you mentioned, we have a couple of presentations this evening. First is by the Can Do Kitchen of Kalamazoo. And I'm going to invite forward our Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, Antonio Mitchell, to introduce our guests.
Thank you.
Welcome, Attorney Mitchell.
Thank you very much. It was good to see everyone, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Vice Mayor, and Attorney for the City. It's good to be here. Haven't been up here in a long time. Introducing tonight, Ms. Lucy Dilly, the Director and Founder of the Can Do Kalamazoo, used to be Kanzu, Kalamazoo Can Do Kitchen at one point. It's an honor to have her come and talk about this incubator initiative that started 10 years ago with the City's involvement and has transpired into a great location with opportunity for, as I say, reinvestment in the community. Our department is working with this initiative and we have space there that we have office time to assist small businesses as well, which she will talk about in her presentation. But just a little background, Can Do Kalamazoo, like I said, used to be Kanzu Kitchen, is a nonprofit organization that supports entrepreneurship and small businesses. Ms. Dilly started this organization in 2008, not far from this location here, with a focus on supporting food, business, and small businesses development and recognize that with a shared kitchen. And Can Do Kalamazoo has since expanded in the scope of supporting businesses overall, small startup and existing businesses, to help them grow here in the city of Kalamazoo. Ms. Dilly's leadership has definitely shown over the years of really having a heart for small business growth and development in our community. And we've been in a positive, great, joyous mood to see this space not only open, but being in operation. And it's been a joy for our department and our staff to assist in this process over the last couple of years. And it's been great now having staff at that building on a regular basis. So, I think Scott, you want to put the presentation up? And I'll have Ms. Dilly come up and pretty much give her a presentation, then we'll be able to answer questions as needed.
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
That's all that he is. I'm going to go back all the way to the beginning. Thanks for having me tonight. It's good to see all of you, a lot of familiar faces. Can Do Kalamazoo has been on a journey, and the Foundation for Excellence and the City's support has helped us at a crucial moment of this transition. In the last five years, we went from being Can Do Kitchen, a food business incubator, to Can Do Kalamazoo, an entrepreneur hub that serves any business type. And I'm going to take a few minutes to share how we got here. It came about from Can Do being part of ecosystem convenings that resulted in a feasibility study that was commissioned by the City and by LISC. This study identified a need and a demand for a mixed-use incubator, I'll talk about why I put it in quotes later, a place for entrepreneurs from any industry to go for resources, connections, support, and facilities. The study also found that 519 South Park Street, the building that Can Do Kitchen was working on developing, was an ideal site for this incubator. To provide the most benefit to area entrepreneurs, it would include coworking spaces, meeting rooms, offices, a kitchen incubator, affordable services bolstered by grants and donors, and corporate sponsorships, and dedicated staff to help entrepreneurs. The Can Do Kitchen Board of Directors discussed the benefits of expanding the scope from food business to any business type. With our existing framework for business support and a robust partner network, we realized we could step into this role. We had seen the power of equitable business support in our work with food entrepreneurs and realized that we could have even more impact if we supported entrepreneurs in any industry. We spoke with our partners to gauge their interest in stepping into this role. Finding no one stepping up, we solidified our commitment to running the mixed-use business incubator. And in 2021, we gave a proposal to the committee that was championing this effort. With the support of partners and the City, we began the transition from Can Do Kitchen to an inclusive entrepreneur hub and kitchen incubator. Now, you'll notice the difference in terminology from mixed-use incubator to entrepreneur hub. We realized from getting feedback that mixed-use incubator wasn't really making sense to the entrepreneurs we were set out to serve. So, we instead began using the word "hub" as we felt this was a better and more relatable representation of what we were setting out to do. So, in 2022, we changed our name to Can Do Kalamazoo. We set a 10-year goal to be the entrepreneur hub for the greater Kalamazoo area. We began welcoming non-food entrepreneurs into Can Do Camp and completed the first phase of our capital campaign. That was a big year for us. I'll never forget 2022. Our hub would provide many valuable services under one roof and make customized referrals for entrepreneurs to all our community partners and resources. It would be a place for entrepreneurs to come and be confident they would receive the support they need in effective and efficient ways to support them in making timely connections for those next steps they need to make. We assured the community that we would be, continue our specialized focus on food makers through our incubator kitchen program. An important part of this transition was moving to a larger location that could accommodate the growing number of food businesses that were waiting to be part of our program. And also, this new facility would allow us to add more capacity to serve as this hub for entrepreneurs of any industry, as our former building on Lake Street didn't have suitable spaces or amenities for this type of activity. FFE funds went towards our capital campaign, which helped us complete around 50% of our new building at 519 South Park Street. In the fall of 2024, we opened our new hub and incubator kitchen. The remaining two-thirds of the FFE grant had been supporting our growth into a hub and helped us leverage additional government funding aimed at supporting our work as we So, 2024 was an incredible year for Can Do. Through our relocation process, we never stopped any programming, we never paused. In fact, we added services. Surf-safe exam proctoring, more workshops, more business boost meetings. In addition to these, we continued offering pathways to funding, one-on-one guidance, workshops, twice yearly learning cohorts, translation and below-market rate services. We've been able to increase the number of entrepreneurs served, as well as the depth of support. 136 people were supported with Can Do programs last year. We secured grants and donations to fill the $234,000 gap between what it costs us to offer the programs and what entrepreneurs pay in fees. In addition to the entrepreneur-facing work, I'm also proud to say that we began offering health insurance for our employees last year. Everything we do is to help equip new entrepreneurs and small business owners with the knowledge and tools to make the best choices they can make about their business and increase the number that can only, not only launch, but sustain those businesses to provide generational wealth-building opportunities for their families. Our long-term vision, or North Star, is that all entrepreneurs will have a pathway towards business success that is clear, equitable, and attainable. That's actually my job description, right there. We do this by activating inclusive programs, resources, and spaces. So, what do we mean by "all entrepreneurs"? We mean people who have systemic and generational barriers in front of them, preventing them from having the same networks and financial stability as more privileged business owners. We mean entrepreneurs who are exploring a variety of business types and industries. We mean people from all different cultures and languages, all of it. And what do we mean by "pathway"? We mean entrepreneurs have a guide to help them navigate resources and decision points. It means one foot in front of the next, progressing towards goals, whatever those may be for each entrepreneur. Now, what do we mean by "clear, equitable, and attainable"? Well, that's a big one. A few things is that we're always working to clarify complex information and put it in different formats for people to understand and digest. We appreciate that everyone starts in different spots, has different backgrounds, so we work with each person to make a customized plan for their next steps. We help them set realistic expectations and goals so they can make real progress. These things put together make for a very thoughtful and responsive framework with a focus on constant improvement and evolution with what our community's entrepreneurs need. Our three main programs had big impact last year. Thanks to my amazing staff team, 63 people participated in more than one program, which shows commitment of the entrepreneur and also a growing trust in the effectiveness of our programs. We grew our business boost consulting, providing 22 free introductory meetings and 75 meetings in total. Can Do Camp, in its eighth year, had 47 participants through a total of 24 weeks of programming. Through our work with the WMU Eval Lab, we learned that nearly 100% of people improved in branding and financial skills through Can Do Camp, which are foundational areas for all business types. Plus, all of the food business participants reported increasing their understanding of food licensing, which is amazing because that is one of the most complicated pieces of something for food businesses have to figure out. This leads to the impacts of our kitchen incubator. Our incubator is a three-year program, allowing businesses to access below-market rate rental of our kitchen space and gradually increasing that rental rate while receiving comprehensive business support. This fosters their, building of their capacity to be able to graduate from our incubator and go on to their own locations. Last year, four companies graduated from our food business incubator, moving to larger, more independent, shared kitchen facilities. So, accessibility is crucial to Can Do Kalamazoo, and financial and language access are two big areas that we work to break down. We're well aware that many people are scraping by and that business ownership is their way to pursue bringing in that much-needed household income. At the same time, in our experience, we haven't, we don't believe it's beneficial in the long-term health of the businesses to give away 100% free services and support all the time. We help them to see right away that starting a business costs money and takes a lot of time. This mindset helps them set up for success. Knowing that this is very difficult, we work to keep our rates low, seeing as in our very affordable, all-inclusive year-one rental rate at our kitchen, which starts at $7.75 per hour, and that the highest for that year one is $20 an hour. Our Can Do Camp fee is $300 to $400, depending on if you're a food business or a non-food business, compared to an estimated value of $3,000 of value per participant. We're not charging them $3,000. We offer options to pay overtime, which alleviates the financial barrier for the majority of people. We also offer a kitchen and camp scholarship program for participants who have a significant financial burden. As I mentioned before, Can Do seeks grants and donations to fill that gap between what it costs us to put on these programs and what entrepreneurs are able to pay. Language barriers can be very debilitating when it comes to starting a business. One reality we see playing out again and again at Can Do is that people held professional positions in their home countries but can't access that same career level here in this country due to language and other barriers. So, they use whatever skills they have and they turn towards business ownership. It's very difficult to start a business in a language that you didn't grow up speaking. So, we contract with translators in the community to provide interpretation of meetings, licensing sessions, and written materials. We do not pass this cost along to the entrepreneur. And our partnerships with El Consilio and Urban Alliance have opened the doors for even more comprehensive translation support. Speaking of partners, let's talk about what we've accomplished for entrepreneurs with our partners. In 2024, Can Do Kalamazoo was designated as one of 27 small business support hubs in Michigan by the ME-DC. We received a $1.9 million grant to strengthen the Can Do Kalamazoo hub and support the programming. Building on existing strategic partnerships with Room 35, Beta Startup Zoo, and South Haven Regional Business Hub, in 2024 and 2025, we will re-grant 40% of our hub grant to these partners. Collectively, we've worked with 99 entrepreneurs as of last year through programming that was supported through the ME-DC hub grant. This group works to provide effective referrals between the organizations and is working collaboratively to disperse over 400,000 in business grants. We've also partnered with Southwest Michigan First on the First Path Program. They recognize that Can Do Kalamazoo already worked with aspiring and beginning entrepreneurs, making us a really great partner for First Path, which is geared towards the idea exploration phase. In 2024, we held our first jointly-run First Path Program, building an important piece of the entrepreneur journey. A dedicated space to explore ideas, assess your personal strengths, and learn to build networks that you'll need for the rest of your business life. This puts people in a great position to be in Can Do Camp next, which they can really dig into those fundamentals. Another partner is El Consilio. They've been a longstanding partner with us. They have a business program, and Can Do has been able to provide some of our Can Do Camp content for their business programs. We also work together to provide support for individual entrepreneurs, especially food entrepreneurs who may like, would like to join our incubator kitchen. And this fall, our Can Do Camp program will be held at their beautiful new building, opening up even more access to Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs. I'm going to skip a couple sides, but I didn't want to totally skip this one because this shows Mika in her new cakery, which I hope you've all been to a couple blocks down the road. Mika received a Business Builder Scholarship from us in 2014. Our scholarship program was actually funded by a $50,000 CDBG grant through the city just a few years ago. We provided nine scholarships and wraparound support for food businesses. Mika launched Dessert First, built her business tirelessly over the next 10 years, working a full-time job all the while. It's amazing to see her open up her own location and see her smiling and thriving, and that's just why I love my job. All right, back to some more partnerships. One of our goals is to have partner organizations right in the hub. This makes referrals easy and effective for entrepreneurs who need specific types of support. It helps busy business owners get a variety of services in one place, and it supports the idea that when you walk through our doors, you literally have a whole team working for you to solve your business's challenges with you. With FFE grant support, we launched this idea with the City Economic Development Team using one of our dedicated offices. They brought in SPD, SCORE, and the Social Equity Cannabis Chamber to round out the services provided in their office, and now they have a regular rotation right in the Can Do Kalamazoo hub. Entrepreneurs appreciate having direct access to the City when they have questions about building development, downtown dollars, and funding, and when they're in need of mentoring, expert business planning, market research, templates, and vast libraries of business webinars, SCORE and the SBDC are right there with regular office hours and familiar faces. This is the type of support that we will continue to grow at our hub and will become even more impactful when we complete the other half of the building. I'm so happy to be here with the City, the SCORE, with SCORE and SBDC in the chamber. Partners tonight, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Extremely impressive. It's so happy that the City was able and continues to be able to be a part of this amazing effort.
Yes.
So, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor Hess?
I really don't have any questions, Mayor, but I, thank you for helping Mika. She's my favorite. She makes gluten-free cupcakes, and I go in there and get one. Oh, not every day, but quite often.
Yeah.
And what a joy she is in this community. So, my sense is that what you do, it just, it just puts out joy into Kalamazoo. So, thank you for doing that. And, and where, so if we wanted to just come tour, I have, I, I'm sorry to say I haven't been there. Is it possible to just come tour?
Yes. You can come anytime between nine and three. The door is unlocked. Please come.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Cooney.
Well, I just, I just want to clap. I thought it was a tremendous presentation, and I got so much to learn about all this. But, what you're doing is you're helping people realize their dreams, helping people who have this vision get on. And I'm so glad, Antonio, that you linked with this project. It's so great. I'm going to have to visit for you to explain more because you covered so much turf in there. But, what I do get out of it is that there's a lot of people that got this dream but don't know how to proceed, and you helped them transfer that dream into reality. So, thank you for doing that. It's great.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Commissioners? No. So, I have a question. What does your referral pipeline look like? How does that work? Is it word of mouth, or what sorts of things bring people to your door and understand what might be available for them?
It's a few different things. Word of mouth is one of them. We have intake forms with some of our partners as well, so they can send people to us through forms. Internet search is huge. We get a lot of people just visiting the website because they're looking for, you know, kitchen or business support. But they're, the specific partnerships we have are a pretty powerful source of referrals.
That's the primary.
Yeah.
Do you ever find yourself in a situation where you say, "We have to limit this," a particular cohort or class, "there's more people that are interested," or are you able to mostly accommodate interested folks into very, whatever doorway they're coming in?
We don't have to, to limit it too often. We, we do with classroom size. Honestly, that's really the limiting factor sometimes. So, when we get our building finished, we'll have a much bigger classroom, then we won't have to limit it anymore.
And what's your timeframe on that, as far as completion that you're hoping for?
Um, I am hoping for 2027.
In the fundraising mode for that?
We're in fundraising mode right now, yes.
Okay. And you got a capital campaign?
Yes.
Do you have a dollar amount goal?
Yeah, we are working to raise 1.4 million. We're 33% of the way there.
Okay. And is that an active, ongoing campaign also, so people can come to your website and, and see how, how to contribute to that?
We're in the quiet phase.
Quiet phase.
At the moment.
Okay, sounds great.
But I'm hoping that end of the year, early next year, we can switch it on to the public phase.
Okay. Sorry to bring it up then. I didn't realize it was a quiet phase.
You can, I mean, you can talk about it.
Okay. Thanks again for, for coming here, for spending some time with us this evening, for all, for all the great work. I really appreciate you.
You're welcome. Thank you all so much.
Yeah. Manager Ritzma.
Our next speaker and topic is Lindsey Merling, who is a Health Education Supervisor at the Kalamazoo County Health and Community Services Department. Lindsey, you're going to give a program overview of the department. Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome. Nice to have you here.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Lindsey Merling. I'm the Health Education Supervisor at Kalamazoo County Health and Community Services. I've been there for seven years, and I've had the pleasure of being voluntold to do this presentation. So, very happy to be here and to hopefully teach you, or, you know, maybe you can learn something new about what we do. Something that I've learned is that when you say "Health Department," a lot of times people have an idea of what you do, and maybe that's a handful of services. However, while we do offer a lot of those mandated and essential public health functions at Kalamazoo County Health and Community Services, we also have some of the social and community service programs also available housed within the Health Department. So, I'm excited to kind of share some of those with you. But first, I wanted to see if I can get this to work. It's not, okay, there we go. I wanted to share our mission and vision. Our mission is to improve the health for all residents of Kalamazoo County, and our vision is a community where equity in social, mental, physical, and environmental health is achieved for all county residents. And this little blurb that you see here is basically what I was saying before, is that we provide essential and mandated public health services, as well as a variety of other services that we have in-house as well. And we will start with talking about our Area Agency on Aging Division, which we call our AAA Division, and in Kalamazoo, that is going to be Region 3A. And this division really helps to identify the needs of older persons in our community. And then, they're going to connect them with the resources that are appropriate for that person, basically in an effort to enable them to continue living within their own home, living independently in their own home, or wherever it is that they choose to live. So, if they're wanting to live in another area, it's teaching them the tools, giving them the resources, so that they're able to continue that independence as long as possible. Also, our AAA, they do administer the Kalamazoo County Senior Millage, and basically, that senior millage then is going to help fund those essential functions and those essential services directly back to the older population, so that group of individuals does, does administer that. And I just wanted to mention that there is an upcoming event, so our AAA also hosts and facilitates and puts on the annual Senior Expo, and that is going to be Tuesday, October 7th, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Kalamazoo County Expo Center. And you're going to find lots of different vendors that sign up to take part in that event. You can find resources not only for the older population, but also for caregivers as well. So, it's a great event, and it's one definitely that you don't want to miss. So, you'll see that on our website. We have lots of advertising for that, but please keep in mind that our, you know, Senior Expo is coming up. If you know anybody that would like to attend, please let them know. Next, we're going to talk about our Environmental Health Division. And this division, as you might guess, helps to protect the environment and also protect the community from different environmental conditions. Some of the programs that we have are the Land, Water, and Wastewater Team, and they are the ones that are going to be sampling well water. So, those houses that have wells, we can do sampling for that for different bacteria, harmful bacteria that we want, you know, make sure that's not in there and getting into people's bodies. Also, that team, they also go out to our local beaches and they'll test for E. coli to make sure that the local beach water is safe for the community members to access. So, we'll do that. And then, also, this team is responsible for inspection of local campgrounds to make sure that all those rules and regulations are being adhered to within those campgrounds and making sure that's safe as well. And then, we had our Food Safety and Facilities Team, and they are the ones responsible for the restaurant inspections, for the food truck inspections. They also monitor, manage, and issue temporary food licenses. So, if you have a banquet, or if you have a church that's offering food to the public, or some kind of catering event, it is required that you have a food license or a temporary food license for that. So, it's their job to accept those applications, to review them, and to make sure that the food is safe out there in the community as well. And then, we have our Household Hazardous Waste. I don't know if you've heard about that. That's actually an off-site location. But our Household Hazardous Waste, it takes in many hazardous items, so some things that you could bring in are things maybe like batteries, different forms of electronics, certain types of paints. If you want a list of all the things that can and cannot be accepted, I did bring a list, so I have that information if you want that. I can leave that here. Or, you can find that on our website at calcounty.gov now. It just changed, and you'll just look under the Environmental Health section, under Household Hazardous Waste, and there's an entire list of things that they will accept and will not accept. So, that's a really helpful list. So that's a really helpful list. And again, I did bring some copies with me as well. Lastly, we are fortunate enough within our Environmental Health Division to have our own in-house laboratory. And so this laboratory, which is also considered a regional hub, it does all of our water sampling tests and all of our clinical tests. So within our personal health division, we have a clinic where we do things like STI testing and different types of testing. So that internal lab will do our testing and get our in-house results there. So we don't have to necessarily send it off. Sometimes we do, but a lot of things we can do in-house. And then we can also do the water testing. So the samples that come in can be tested in, in-house as well. And as well as some of the neighboring areas, since we are a regional hub. Moving on to our Veterans Service Office. So this exists primarily to assist veterans who are in the process of obtaining their federal benefits. So this is a really great service for those who are struggling with, you know, how do I apply for these benefits? They need some support and assistance. They can call in, they can make an appointment, they can walk in, and they can speak with somebody who can navigate them through basically all the questions that they have about their benefits. Additionally, they have a Soldiers and Sailors Fund. And this is a relief fund that can assist with things like food, transportation. There's other things that they can assist with. So this is just a relief fund that if, you know, you're having some trouble with that, you can also meet with somebody and talk about what that looks like and how they can help them. The Veterans Office also supports and sponsors different events that honor veterans throughout the year. So you have your annual Veterans Stand Down. And then also the Veterans Day Ceremony is sponsored by our Veterans Service Office as well. Moving on to one of our bigger divisions. So we have our Maternal-Child Health Division. And this is a program or a division that offers a variety of programs to support mothers and their families. And we have some home visitation programs. As you can see here, we have Nurse Family Partnership, Healthy Babies, Healthy Start, and Healthy Families America. These are home visitation programs where we have either a nurse or a community health worker go into homes and do assessments and support families in their own homes. So these are all really great programs that help to decrease health disparities, improve health outcomes, and overall, you know, strengthen that family resiliency overall. And then some other programs that are within this division are the Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Navigation Program. That is a mouthful. We say B, C, 3, and P for short. But this program helps eligible women access breast and cervical healthcare services. So we all know that it's important to have screenings. And so if a woman, there is eligibility requirements. But if you have any questions on that, we have a phone number where you call in and you can potentially get assistance and help getting those services. Next, we have Children's Special Healthcare Services, which is, it's a program. Basically, it's a supplemental insurance. So if you have a child or there are some adults that have eligible criteria, it assists with paying those medical bills if you see a specialist. So it's really helpful for those who have chronic conditions. And like I said, there is eligibility requirements behind it. But all of our programs have intake forms and people that can assist you if you have questions on that. You would just call in and call the number. And I also did bring brochures that have all of our programs with their phone numbers as well. Next, within the Maternal-Child Health Division, we have what's called the Fatherhood Program or 4DAD. And this is a program that supports fathers, sorry for that feedback, supports fathers in the community and just, you know, works on strengthening the overall role of being a father. So we have lots of programs that, you know, that work with mothers and work with families. So this is a really special program that we're able to have that really focuses just on, you know, dads and how can dads assist? And, you know, how can dad help support the overall family and what is his role in that? Next, we have Infant Safe Sleep. So that is just what it, what it sounds like. It's a program that educates and provides resources on how to create a safe environment for infants. So we all know in Kalamazoo that we have disparities with infant mortality. And so this program teaches, goes into houses and teaches people how to create that safe environment. What does that look like for baby? What should you have? What shouldn't you have? Those types of things. We also have a Fetal Infant Mortality Review. And then lastly, the Women, Infant, and Children, which most people are familiar with, our WIC program. And that's a program that can offer one-on-one counseling for families with young children. It can offer food benefits. It can offer breastfeeding support. And then resources and referrals also. And a lot of our programs work together. So we have a lot of programs at HCS is what we call it. And we do our best to make sure that, you know, our WIC program is working with our immunization program, is working with, you know, our personal health division so that we have that wraparound overall care to make sure that if somebody comes in, they may need other services other than what they're coming in for. So we want to make sure that they have access and that they're aware of all the services that they could benefit from while they're with us. Okay, moving on to the Personal Health Division. So this provides prevention and direct services to our community. So again, these are the typical mandated services that most public health entities offer. But some of the programs that we have are the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program. So we do have a lead nurse that does nurse case management for all the children in the county that have elevated lead, blood lead levels. So whenever that happens, she gets that case and then she will contact them and work on how to get that individual's lead levels lowered. So that's what she does. She also does a lot of outreach and education in schools and in different community-based organizations to make sure that people are aware of the dangers of lead, how you can find it. She also does a really good job of working with providers on educating them about making sure they're following procedures and protocols, making sure that they're testing lead. Because we did just have a change where now it's mandated that all children should be tested for lead at age 12 months and 24 months, where it wasn't like that previous. So she'll make sure that these kids are being tested appropriately. Next, we have our Communicable Disease Team. So this team conducts investigations, does contact tracing. They will, also they do case management with people with active tuberculosis. And they're responsible for making sure that those individuals are treated appropriately. And they will physically have to hand them medication and, and manage those individuals for a long period of time. They manage our Outbreak Response Team. So if there's an outbreak in the community or if there's something that we find epidemiologically, we all get together and they kind of facilitate those meetings. What are we going to do? Who do we need to contact? What do we need to do to make sure that this is contained within our community and isn't spreading any further? Next, we have our STI Counseling and Testing and HIV Counseling and Testing. So we have a five-day-a-week clinic that we run. We do STI testing and treatment, but we also do community testing and treatment. So at the end, you'll see we have a mobile unit. And we use that unit to park in different locations and to make our clinic more accessible in the community. So you may see it driving around or parked in different areas. So we do lots of different things out of the mobile unit. I'll get to that later. But one of the things is we can do immunizations and STI testing. Speaking of immunizations, we have our Immunization Action Program, which we shorten as IAP. And then we also do international travel immunizations. So our IAP program, its aim is to maintain herd immunity within our community. So their focus is making sure that our vaccine rates stay where they need to be. So they work really hard with providers, again, making sure that they're, you know, asking kids and adults if they need a vaccine, if they've been vaccinated. And they act as a liaison between MDHHS and those providers for our Vaccines for Children program just to make sure, like I said, that people are, you know, maintaining their herd immunity with their vaccines. And then our International Travel Immunizations Clinic, that's a really neat clinic that we offer. And what that is, is if you're going to be traveling somewhere out of the country, we can educate you on where you're going, the diseases that you might experience in that area. Maybe you need a vaccine to help protect you from something that you won't necessarily be in contact with here. But if you're going out of the country, that might be something you need to worry about. We will also let you know about insects and other bugs that you might come in contact wherever you're going just to make you aware and to, you know, make sure that you're educated and prepared when you travel. And then we have our Hearing and Vision, which these staff members will go into schools and do the hearing and vision testing to screen for hearing and vision problems. So that's a program that we offer as well. And then lastly, our Family Planning, which is one of the newer ones within our Personal Health Division. So we do counseling, we do annual exams, we do contraceptive, we do prep. We do a lot of different things within our family planning. And then lastly, before we talk about the mobile unit, we'll talk about one of our newest offices, which is our Health Education Office, which is from what I'm the supervisor for. So this is a program that started in January 2024. And it just came to our attention that of a county of our size, we probably need to have a health education or several health educators to really focus on our internal programs and then pick different topics that are, that seem to be an issue within our community. So for example, we have an opioid slash harm reduction health educator. We have an STI slash cannabis health educator. We have a Healthy Homes health educator, which really focuses on things like identifying and remediating lead within the home, mold within the home, pests, bedbugs, indoor air quality, things like that. That's one of our newest programs. And then we have a generalist and she's really working on collaborating internally. So making sure that all of our internal programs, they have a voice and helps with collaborating at community events and working together and advocating for all of our internal programs. But we also have different initiatives going on, like our Wear One Campaign, which is a condom distribution campaign. We offer free condom packs to businesses in the community. It's meant to reduce barriers like embarrassment of asking for condoms or buying condoms. We have naloxone training and distribution free. So if any organization, business, any school, any entity would like to have a naloxone training or naloxone kits, we can provide those to you. We also have gun locks. So we have gun locks that we can pass out for anybody that has a gun, that needs a gun lock. We have those available. We typically bring those to our community events. And we also have them, if you just come in in our lobby and ask for one, we can get you one there. We do Healthy Home Workshops. So we try to do targeted workshops in areas that need a little bit of extra help in learning how to keep a house clean, how to clean up mold if you see it, if they need a radon test, we can give that to them. So we do that. And right now, we're offering free Healthy Homes kits to anybody who comes to our workshop, which is basically a bucket with cleaning supplies, a radon test kit, a gun lock if they need one, paper towel, gloves, mask, cleaning solution, a mop, all, everything that they would need to clean up, especially if they have any lead exposures. We also have marijuana lock bags. And so for those individuals who recreationally or medically use marijuana, we want to make sure that it's safe and out of reach of pets and children. So we offer free lock bags to the community and pass those out. This year, we decided to partner with the cannabis dispensaries and they are passing them out to people who are purchasing marijuana at their sites. We do Tobacco Cessation, which is one of our newer programs as well. We'll do consultations and do cessation for tobacco, which includes vaping cessation as well. We've been doing a lot of different vaping presentations within the school districts right now. And then we also do presentations on a variety of topics. We do community tabling events. You may see us at lots of different community events throughout the summer. And also we partner with community organizations as much as possible. So one of our goals is to not continue to create things and reinvent the wheel. But if there's already an organization or an entity in the community that's already working on something, we want to partner with them and strengthen them. So we've been working really hard to try to put together different groups and different forums to talk about what are you doing? What are you doing? How can we help you? How can we partner? So with, within health education and our other programs, we're really trying to focus on our community partnerships. And here's our mobile unit. So our outreach services that we have been providing with this are vaccinations, STI, HIV, testing, childhood lead testing. We can do lactation consultations out of it, tobacco cessation consultations, and just general health education. And we do have some new initiatives coming up where we're wanting to add some more health screening to it. So stay tuned for some more services that we can provide out of our mobile unit. And here are some pictures of us out in the community doing our thing, all of our different programs. And that is my presentation for today. Does anybody have any questions for me?
First of all, thank you very, very much. That's a lot of stuff. Yeah, I appreciate that. So yeah, questions, comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Lindsey. It's an enormous amount of work you guys are doing. One question I wanted to ask you was, the programs that you have around maternal and, and youth. There's so many really great programs in Kalamazoo. Can you say a little bit about how you guys work together for a collective response to that?
Yeah, Deb may be able to help, to help me out with that one. But I do know that all of the maternal and child health programs work really closely with Cradle Kalamazoo.
Great.
Frontline, you know, that there's a frontline meeting that happens, but I can let you, yeah.
Good evening. Deblons, Deputy Health Officer. So yeah, so our-
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So again, Deblons, Deputy Health Officer. So most of our maternal-child health programs focus on infancy through five years. And then, and that's why we're more focused with Cradle. We deal with first-time moms. We deal with those that have subsequent pregnancies. Again, the infant mortality rate. We work on femur review. So looking at addressing those cases and seeing what we can, what changes we can make in the community so that these things don't happen, continually happen. So working with providers, working with the hospitals, working with clinics for access, transportation, making sure that mom has a voice when she has concerns and she's being heard. Let's see, what else do we have? Yeah, so basically we're the, we're the beginning part of the continuum.
So it's got RX Kids working with you guys too?
So we, we do. We can refer moms to that. And we're a partner with RX Kids. That's again, part of the foundation.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one more question.
Not one of the county programs, but we do help support.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question is, and then the budget that was just passed. Are you anticipating cuts to any of these programs?
Million-dollar question, isn't it? So right now, it's, it's kind of an unknown. Some of our funding has come through. We have some additional funding that we can help support some of those programs that may have gaps. But right now, we're not seeing where we need to make any cuts with programs.
Good, good. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Pragel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for being here tonight. So one question I had for you, and this is kind of related, something I see in my, in my daytime job is just households that are struggling with hoarding situations. And I was just curious if, if that's something that you all work with or have resources to support people as well. I know sometimes it's been challenging to help people navigate. But, you know, it's one of those challenges sometimes homeowners or individuals face where it's not just like you show up and it's once and done. It requires a lot of intensive support, wraparound services and whatnot to support those individuals. And so I was curious if there's anything you offer related to that?
Um, you said hoarding, correct? Yeah. So we do address hoarding, however, more so as an educational opportunity right now. So we did put together a Healthy Homes Action Plan with our Environmental Health Division. And so we've had several talks about how to do just what you're saying. We did purchase some bins and some storage containers to kind of help and to teach people how to do stuff. But really, there's that mental health part that's really important in hoarding. And so that's something that we've been talking about and trying to see who in the community focuses on that and if there, if that's a resource that we can send people to. So we're still working on that, but that's definitely discussions that we're having within our Healthy Homes and Environmental Health, internal meetings on, you know, what the best way is to, to deal with that situation.
Yeah, outwardly, I mean, it's challenging enough. But I think one of the things that, that is observed is that it precipitates a lot of other health and safety issues, everything from extraordinary fire hazards to tripping hazards if you're elderly to pests, you know, rats, mice, those sort of things as well. And so I, I know it's a big issue and I, I think it's great that we're at least trying to get started to address that, but.
Yeah, and I'm hoping as we continue to grow, like I mentioned, the Healthy Homes Health Educator, she's not even a year into this. So as we grow this program, we're hoping to, you know, maybe provide more resources and things to something like that as well.
The other thing too, I've, I've been observing a pretty big uptick in recent years in terms of people who have, have Lyme disease in terms of- of people who have, have Lyme disease in terms of tick populations, and just was curious in terms of what kind of services or education you're providing related to that, try to help inform the community about how to identify if they have a tick or how to treat them and identify if they could potentially have Lyme's disease.
You're talking about, so every year, we put together a Lyme disease work group, and so that's individuals from health education, from our clinic, obviously, our communicable disease team, our medical director, and every year, we look at the data, so we have our epidemiologists involved as well, look at the data, look at what we did in the past. We typically do a press release. We do a lot of social media education and creation of materials to pass out at different events as well. In environmental health, we also have a vector surveillance program where they're actively doing tick drags and sending those samples off for testing so that we know, you know, do we have a prevalence of, of, you know, ticks that, that have that bacteria in them that cause Lyme disease? So that is something we do every year, but we definitely always get together with this work group and kind of lay out what is our plan every year. Where are we at? What did we do last year? What do we need to improve on? And so we're, we're doing that right now. And yeah, there's a lot of work involved in, like I said, that environmental health piece, but also the education piece that we do. And something new that we did this year was we went to all the camps. So we went to the Nature Center, we went to the Girl Scout camps, and we educated the camp counselors on ticks, on how to spot a tick, and so giving them the education since they are going to be, you know, outside, they have those kids involved. So we, that was a new initiative that we did was to target all the camps that have the kids in the summer.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, that's great, thank you. And then the last question for you, I know you mentioned that the Health Education Department segment is relatively new. I was curious in terms of what are the greatest education gaps that you think exist in our community right now, that we really need to invest more, focus more on in the community?
That's a great question. There's a lot. So I think that my answer to that is, right now, we're focused on the data, and so what the data is telling us that we need to focus on opioid and those harm reduction strategies. And as, as we grow, there's going to be more topics that we're able to cover, you know, depending on a lot of different things. We may be able to add more health educators, but at this time, we usually, you know, prioritize by using the data and what we're seeing, and, and kind of, that's kind of how we choose, like what we're going to focus on at this time, but that could change, we all know that.
Sure.
In areas, as far as gaps go, I don't know that I can answer that, yeah, at this time.
Sure, sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Commissioner Cooney?
Lindsay, we're both of you, gun violence as a public health issue, are you doing anything in that area?
Right now, we are focusing on our gun lock distribution. However, we have contacted the state, and we're going to put together a local group of people. So there, there are already existing things like Blueprint for Peace out there in the community. So what we're focusing on is trying to do our best, like I mentioned before, is partnering with them and trying to strengthen these initiatives that are already out there. So we have contacted them, we've let them know, like, we are here, we're here to educate, we're here to help, we're here to support you in any way possible. So they've invited us to their meetings. So that's really our focus right now, is to kind of do, stay in our lane of education and handing out these gun locks, but then partnering and doing what we can for the bigger picture.
With Blueprint for Peace, is that-
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Vice Mayor Hess.
You could also send people to the Gun Amnesty Program-
Yes.
-Kalamazoo Public Safety.
I just learned about that.
Isn't that awesome?
Yes, I just learned about that, and I added it to my resource list. Yeah, it is awesome.
Thank you. Do you have any current, following up on Commissioner Prado's questions, do you have any current data right now for ticks for Lyme disease or disease caused by mosquitoes? I mean, at this point, there's, there are some, there's some news out there and issues about, you know, people freaking out about getting bit by mosquitoes. Can, do you have information and data about what's out there right now?
I did not bring any data with me on that topic, unfortunately, but I can definitely get that information, what information we do have to you from our epidemiologist team.
Oh, cool, thank you. Let's see. So, so yeah, I saw y'all tabling at the Latinx Festival on Saturday. I don't think you were there, Lindsay, because they, I said, are you coming to present on Monday? And they're like, no, we think Lindsay's going to do it. So anyway, they're everywhere in the community, and I, I love the fact that you are out there educating and helping people be healthier and safer here in Kalamazoo. Let's see, how, how many employees do you have? You are doing so many things. It's not just you two.
Some days, it feels that way. We employ about 150 staff at the Health Department.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. And to Commissioner Cooney's point, I really hope and pray that you have consistent funding so that you can keep those people, and as you said, you're growing, so that you can also grow your services. Thank you for that. The, yeah, I, I would say that I have been to the Senior Expo as a tabler for another organization, and unfortunately, everybody was my age or older, and so I, I saw a lot of people I knew, and it's, it is fun. I, I just want to give a plug for the Senior Expo. It's, it's really wonderful, so it's, it's lots of resources, lots of fun, so I, thank you for doing that, too. I have heard that the hazardous waste facility is expanding or growing. Can you tell us about that a little bit? Do you know about that?
So we're looking at, looking for a new building. It's outgrown the size of it, and so we're looking at how to partner with other people on some of those recycling type things, and then what the need is. So yeah, our Board of Commissioners is looking to identify space costs, things of that nature at this time.
Cost, obviously cost. But I will say that I've, so to your point, Commissioner Prado, you know, and when you have a lot of things piling up in your home, and you know they're hazardous, like, where do you take them? You take them to the county hazardous waste site. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for being here. Last question, and I think you've alluded to it too, about mental, mental health issues. Who do you partner with in the community for mental health support?
So it would be through ISK.
Oh. I knew he was going to say that. Thank you so much for doing that. Health has so many aspects, and you are there for all of them, and I certainly appreciate that. The mobile unit is gorgeous, beautiful. Thanks to the county for actually supporting that and getting out into, into our neighborhoods and into the rural areas where, where we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I've got a few questions. Just could you remind everybody the location of your building?
I don't know if I have it on here. No, I do not. It is at 311 East Alcott Street, so we are next door to the new MDHHS building and down the street from the Family Health Center.
So it is not right along the road, is it?
It is pushed back a little bit, yes.
And was it something else before the county moved in there?
It was. It was the Illinois Envelope Company. Yes, yes, it was.
So you have to look for it a little bit. The sign's out by the road, but the building is pushed back away there, right?
That is correct, yeah.
And if anybody has an interest in a whole variety of areas that you've listed, that's where they would go if they wanted to go somewhere?
Absolutely, except for the household hazardous waste.
Except for household hazardous waste, right, okay. Hey, here's a question you might not know the answer to. Do you know how much longer the AAA millage is going on and where it's, when it's going to be coming up again for a vote?
So that is, let's see, that is a six-year millage, I believe, so would be 29, 28, 29?
Okay.
I think that goes back up for vote at that time.
All right, and that does support, that extra millage really contributes a great deal. I know when it started, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe $3 million a year, something like that. I'm not sure what it's up to now.
I believe it's somewhere between $2 and $3 million.
$2 and $3, okay, thank you. I, I've been watching some statistics for Michigan, and I believe every year, about 135,000 people turn 65 in the state of Michigan. Over 25, 20% of the residents in Michigan now are 65 and older, and that is a growing cohort. So that is something that we're going to have to be locally continuing to prepare for. What does that look like in, in a whole bunch of areas? It's, it's actually interesting when you look at the statistics now, that cohort that is younger and presumably going into college is much smaller at the moment, which is going to be a challenge for our educational institutions at the college level because that group is, is not as large as it has been in the past. But the senior group is growing. Talking about collaboration again, and you mentioned the, the Dads organization, Four Dads, which I am particularly committed to that idea of how important that is, and there are a lot of organizations, faith-based and others, that are working in that space, too. Do you feel, and I don't know if you'll know this firsthand, that you're doing a good job of trying to connect once again across the community with, with organizations doing that work?
Yeah, so currently, we, we had the Fatherhood Four Dad program through our HERSA Healthy Start Grant. There's been level funding with that over the past, well, we've had it for over 20 years. So there's, there's not a whole lot of additional funding that comes through there. So this year, there was reduced funding, just because of the things that are happening at the federal level, that we had to subcontract that program out. And so we're working with the Fatherhood Network, Kevin Landers, Lavenders Group, and I think they've done a really good job. They are, they're out in the community, they're doing a lot in spaces that can garner guys and dads to be part of that conversation. They're at a lot of summer activities, they're really getting out there and doing a really nice work with that, so I appreciate it. Derek Miller used to be our Four, our Dad Community Health Worker-
Yeah.
-and then manager. So he has left the county and gone to the Fatherhood Network. So they're growing, and they're getting more in the community and really evolving, so I think they're doing well.
Yeah, great, glad to hear that. Their team has been in and spoken to us from Fatherhood Network, and I knew there was some great work going on out there, so I'm glad to hear that. Just talking about other ways of collaborating, you know, we with our partner, Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services, have a grant to abate lead in homes. How does interaction between that program and people that are identified, how does that all work when it comes to the County Health Department?
So our lead nurse, Patty, works with not only the state of Michigan, but also community partners here to look at what resources are available for family, whether it's rental, whether it's their own house, things of that nature. So she's helping with applications, referring people to spaces where they need to get those resources and tools. So she does a really good job.
Fantastic, yes. Vice Mayor Hess.
Sure, last thing. I was in a meeting, a partnership meeting with the unhoused providers at Public Safety, and one of your, Lindsay, I don't think it was you, one of your workers was talking about vaccinations, getting vaccinations for the unhoused community, and, you know, I thought like, the unhoused community, but what about the community of Kalamazoo? And I was concerned about our city. Our, I think during the last election, election cycle, someone that was running had suggested that we have a Health Department in the city of Kalamazoo. And just no, I mean, just seeing what you're doing, just no, what you're doing is amazing. And so having heard that from that person at that meeting, I thought it would be very impactful for the public, for, I'm sorry, for you two, if I'm helping, Community Services, to do a committee, the whole, for us, so that we also could know, that we could know, but that anyone who's watching could know what's happening in our county and for the people of Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo County. So just huge gratitude for you, for your, for your willingness to work with us. I know it took a long time to schedule, but I'm grateful for you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and if you have those hyandos, you can give them to Clerk Boiling, and he'll pass them around to us. Thank you.
Any last comments or questions, commissioners? All right, thank you once again, appreciate it. Thanks for all your good work. Manager Rissman.
Well, that concludes the work session, part of our meeting.
All right, appreciate that. Commissioners, now's an opportunity for Commissioner comments for the Committee of the Whole. Just a reminder for anyone who is watching, there is also an opportunity for Commissioner comments at our business meeting that starts in about an hour. Any Commissioner comments for the Committee of the Whole? Vice Mayor Hess.
So speaking of education and, and educating people about health, I just want to put something out there about someone, I spoke with someone that works at the Golden Apple, and it's more than an award, but it is resolving the teacher shortage by expanding the pipeline of highly effective, diverse educators, especially in schools of need, through teacher preparation programs. The, the Golden Apple only exists right now in Michigan, Illinois, and New Mexico, but they're looking to expand and grow. Golden Apple inspires, develops, and supports teacher and school leader excellence, especially in schools of need. So, and the director of the Golden Apple is right here in Kalamazoo. She's right here in Kalamazoo, and she's doing amazing work connecting students with professions and students who are in those profession, or teachers who are in those professions with resources. So I just wanted to put that out there, goldenapple.org, look it up. If you are, if you know someone who wants to be a teacher, there is support there. If you know someone who wants to, or needs help in, in educating or being educated, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Anyone else? All right, seen no one else. See everybody in a little bit, and we adjourned.